Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, May the 7th. We welcome you here today. Glad to have you. Good, good crowd tonight. We're glad to have everybody here. Thank you for coming out. Have a lot of business to do. Before we get started, I would like to say a couple of special things here. We would like to welcome Mr. Jared Wright back to the City of Lenore. Jared is back as our Director of Special Projects and Grants, and he's got a lot to work on. I know he's already hit the ground running, so we appreciate that. Welcome back, Jared. Also, we'd like to welcome Kate Starr. Kate is here with us. Kate is in a management intern at City Hall, and we welcome Kate. She is from a famous Starr family in Hickory that we know very well at the Western Piedmont Council Government. But Kate, thank you for coming with us this summer, or this time, and look forward, I hope it's a good internship for you. Appalachian State, by the way, good, great school. You know that.
Can't get away from it.
Can't get away from that. Let's have a couple of congratulations to Mr. Phil Harper, whose daughter graduated from East Carolina University. How about that? Congratulations. And to Brenda Floyd, whose daughter is graduating from North Carolina State University. Congratulations to y'all. You did a, obviously did a great job bringing them up in that, and I know they'll hit the world running, for sure.
So at least two of you got a raise. Big raise.
And as we get ready to go to our time of moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance, please continue to keep the officers in Charlotte, from the Charlotte Police and the United States Marshals Office, families in your thoughts and prayers, as I know the services have been going on this week for them. Did hear today that the officers that were wounded are now out of the hospital and doing much better, so we're glad to hear that. But please keep all those families in your thoughts and prayers, as a terrible time in our, in our world at that time. Also, Todd Perdue is not with us. His daughter had some surgery done today in Winston-Salem, and everything went well. We have talked to Todd, so please keep Todd and his family in your thoughts and prayers as well for his daughter as she continues to recover on that. So please now join me, moment of silence, and we're standing for our pledge. Thank you. Please salute the flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. We've got a couple of special recognitions to start our evening with tonight. And we'll start tonight with a special recognition to present a proclamation to our police chief, Chief Phelps, Brent Phelps, by the way, proclaiming the week of May 12 through May 18 as Peace Officers Memorial Week, and Wednesday, May the 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day throughout the City of Lenore. Please keep our officers in their prayers every day, as we know, finding out what happened in Charlotte and I'll tell that every day. They're out there doing a job that we don't know if they'll return on that day. So please continue to pray for them and think about them, and thank you for what you do every day. This proclamation is in recognition of Peace Officer Memorial Week, May 12 through the 18th, 2024, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of law enforcement agency of the Lenore Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of those inside the City of Lenore, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the City of Lenore Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, be it resolved, I as Mayor of the City of Lenore, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, do hereby proclaim and call upon all citizens of Lenore and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12 through May 18, 2024, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Furthermore, I proclaim and call upon all citizens of the City of Lenore to recognize May 15, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have met the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Witness by hand and seal this the 7th day of May 2024. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for what you do. I'll let you talk here.
Very quickly, I know we have a long agenda. I've said over the years, when I've addressed council on these nights, I wish we didn't have to have this recognition. I wish that the officers, you know, would be able to go home every night when they come in. This past year, in 2023, we had 137 law enforcement officers across the nation die in the line of duty. The top two categories out of that 137 was gunfire and automobile accidents, and those are typically the top two for every year. Last year, North Carolina had three for the whole year. As, as the mayor has mentioned, the events of last week, those emotions are still very fresh and, and heavy on our hearts for those agencies, for the Marshals Office, the Adult Corrections, and for Charlotte PD. I've communicated some with Chief Jennings this past week. I'm in an association that I serve on with him, and it is a very tough thing for agencies to go through. It is a reality, and that is what is dear to my heart, because that's a reality for any one of our officers that come in every day. And we hope and pray that it never happens here or anywhere, but the men and women that put the uniform on make that choice and know that reality, and still come in to do the job. And so I'm proud of the men and women that we have at our department and across the nation, because it is becoming harder and harder to find people that are willing to serve others before serving theirselves. And, and so it's a, it's a tough role, but thank you to council for taking time tonight to recognize this nationally, and we appreciate the moment and the opportunity to say thank you. Thank you.
We'll shoot a picture in a few minutes when we get through these. Our second one tonight is a special recognition for proclamation to Public Services Public Works Director John Hogan, proclaiming the week of May 19 through May 25 as National Public Works Week throughout the City of Lenore. John, as I tell you all the time, you guys are the glue that keeps everything else together. So we appreciate that. Thank you for what you do, and we appreciate all you guys every day that are out there. I see them in the bad weather, rain, whatever's going on, and they're trying to get things done. So thank you very much for that. Proclamation in honor of National Public Works Week, advancing quality of life for all, whereas public works professions focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Lenore. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is, it in, the pub, in the public interest, I got too many ins in there, public interest of the, for the citizens, and civic leaders, and children in the City of Lenore to gain knowledge of, and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I as Mayor and on behalf of Lenore City Council, do hereby designate the week of May 19 through May 25 as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join with representatives of governmental agencies and the American Public Works Association in activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, and administrators, and to recognize the substantial contributions they have made to our national health and welfare, welfare. In witness where of, I have hearing to set my hand and calls the seal of the City of Lenore to be affixed this, the 7th day of May 2024. John, thank you. We appreciate all you do, and all you guys do. So.
All right, well, I'll be as brief as chief was, because the mayor pretty much covered all that, but I'll just touch on the, the advancing of quality, quality of life for all theme for this year through the American Public Works Association. The advancing quality of life for all theme shines a spotlight on the way public works professionals advance our quality of life, whether as a first responder to a storm-related, storm-related event, a regular solid waste pickup, and a myriad of other ways they silently serve our communities. Public works professionals advance the quality of life by providing infrastructure, services, and transportation, fleet man, fleet maintenance, stormwater treatment, maintenance of public facilities and spaces, parks and grounds, and emergency management, and first response, solid waste, and right-of-way management. They are what make our community, communities dynamic places to live and work. So we say thank you for sharing the spotlight, and please join us in celebrating the quiet work these professionals do to make lives better for all of us. And I can't say enough about our staff. There's a, there was quite a few out today in the weather, cleaning up trees from last night's storms, but it takes every single one of them to keep the, to keep the boat afloat, and we are truly blessed with an amazing public works staff. Can't say enough about them, but again, thank you for the spotlight, and thanks, Mayor, and happy Public Works Week soon. Thanks.
And our third one tonight is the proclamation to the Public Services Public Utilities Director, Dr. Jeff Church, proclaiming the week of May 5 through May 11 as Celebrate Drinking Water Week. That's a perfect good one, isn't it? Throughout the City of Lenore. Jeff, and all you guys, thank you for being here. Thank you for what you do every day. You, you keep our water where we can drink it. I always go to the schools, and the first thing I ask the kids is, what's the first thing you did this morning? They always say, brushed my teeth. And I say, you know where you got the water for that? City of Lenore, and we keep it great for you. So thank you for what you guys do. Proclamation celebration of Drinking Water Week, whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas each citizen of the City of Lenore is called upon to help protect our source, our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore, be it resolved, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Lenore, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, I do hereby proclaim the week of May 5 through May 11, 2024, as Celebrate Drinking Water Week throughout the City of Lenore. Witness the hand and seal of the City of Lenore to be fixed the 7th day of May 2024.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate, appreciate all of that.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Mr. Hilber Brand. Drinking Water Week, you, you think of drinking water, but you have to think of the, the whole picture, because you have clean drinking water, but when you finish with it, drinking water goes away. And I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our staff, because our staff are truly behind-the-scenes heroes, because they touch the majority of our county throughout the, throughout every day, because providing drink, clean drinking water, as well as, as well as removing the, the used water. Kevin Matheson, council members, you know these individuals, but I'd like to take an opportunity for the audience to understand what, what our guys do, plus anybody watching online to understand what the Utilities Department does. Kevin Matheson is our water superintendent. He and Mason McDonald, they average six-point million, six-point, six million gallons of water a day that they, that they, they produce, they clean. And they can produce all the water in the world, but if they don't have any pumps to pump the water, then it doesn't go anywhere. So we have Tommy Mann, who is our Utilities Maintenance Superintendent. He and Chuck Carswell, with five individuals, handle all our pumps, ruts, system. They also handle all of our wa, wastewater sites and all of our drinking water sites as well. But he can pump all the water in the world, but if he doesn't have any pipes in the ground, it's not going to go anywhere. And so we have Derek, Derek Goble is our superintendent for distributions and collections. Brandon Goble is his assistant superintendent. They look a lot alike, but they're not kin. And they have, they have 15 members of their department, and they have about 400 miles of sewer line and water line that they have to take care of on a daily basis. We also have, once you use your water, and it either leaves your drain, or you flush, and it leaves your house, it needs to go somewhere. And it goes to either our gunpowder plant, or either our Lower Creek plant. And we have Lisa Triplet and Donnie Hawkins. Lisa's our superintendent, Donnie's our assistant superintendent at both of those plants. And as a team, we all work together to, to provide this service for our customers and for our community. A couple of weeks ago, we had a pretty good, we had a pretty good water leak on Saturday, over, on Saturday night. Did any of you hear about it? Do you know about it?
Not this time.
Yeah, I didn't either. I didn't know it either. I came in on, I came in on Monday morning, and was going down to see Derek's crew, and some of them were talking. Boy, it was a doozy. We had a six-inch concrete line break at 1:00 a.m. on Saturday morning, and went to get, went to fix it. Went on down, and Steven's not here, but he made a comment. He said, boy, it was a doozy, and it was, it was tough. We got there about 1:00 o'clock, but we were able to wrap it up around 5:00, 5:45, 6:00, something like that. But then he said, the customer didn't even know it was off. And I thought, wow, how powerful is that? Because that's the philosophy of not only the folks that are standing here, that's also the philosophy of everybody in the department. And it makes us, as super, as supervisors, it makes us proud of our, of our, of our employees, of the folks working with us. But as a customer, that means a lot, because we all, we are all customers as well. So we're just, we appreciate, we appreciate that. Our staff has 45 employees, and all told, we have over 600 years of experience in our department with 45 employees. Our employees have to have certifications, and if you're in a drinking water side, you certify, your certification areas are from C to A, A to C, A being the highest. And on the wastewater side, it's 1 to 4, 4 being the highest. And out of the 49 employees, we have 133 certifications in the city. So that's something for us to be proud of. But what, the reason we have so many here is because I want to, on our, on our, our week, or our, our meeting over the year, I want to brag about the individuals that are seeking certifications, because they're, again, they're wanting to improve their knowledge on water and wastewater industry. But also, as a, as a customer, it does my heart good knowing that we have professionals in the field that are, that are continuing their education and continuing to strive to be better. So Jonathan Ainsley, Labor Supervisor, WAVE, he passed his grade ones collection certification. Kurt Woody couldn't be here today. He passed his Master Equipment Operator. He passed his grade one collection certification. Jacob Ritchie, Master Equipment Operator, he passed his grade one collections. Matt Walker couldn't be here tonight. He passed his grade ones collections. At our wastewater plant, Lisa Triplet passed her grade two pre-treatment program specialist, and she loved it so much. She was in class all last week and took her grade three last week, last Friday, so we're waiting for those results. Travis Ellis is our chief operator. He, he passed his grade four, which is the highest certification in wastewater treatment operation. He passed that this past year. Jake Suits did the same thing. Jake is our Biosolids Lead Operator, and he passed his grade four wastewater treatment operator certification as well, and we're just, we're proud of him. And Hayden Land couldn't be here tonight. He was, he's our lab analyst. He passed his grade one pre-treatment program specialist certification. He also, last week, was in class all week, and he took his, his second certification. And then we had Spencer Ed, Spencer Edmundston, the night shift operator, and he passed his grade one wastewater treatment operation. Council, you know most of this, and you know what goes on behind the scenes, but our community doesn't. And I just, I want our community to take an opportunity to know that here are some of the faces that provide safe drinking water to them on a daily basis. And as a, I'm just, I'm blessed to be a part of them, because I'm so proud of them, and very, very proud of them. Thank you.
Come on, council, come down. We'll do this one first.
He's got to be up here.
There.
Yeah. He won't have enough room.
Who's going to accept that?
Just right there.
He's standing behind Jeff.
There you go. Make it look like we got a hold of him. Yes, yes, I see your head shine.
It's more embarrassing to make this act like I got hair follicles.
So, like, I think squishing together and moving back is a little bit more.
Move back to the edge.
Squishing again.
Kimmy, that's your right.
Okay.
Squishing.
Squishing.
Yeah.
All right. My turn. Don't move. All right. One, two, three, cheese.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
All right, yeah, now you can come down for the other ones.
All right, we'll do one. John, hook it.
Come on, case.
Almost stand behind him. You gotta hold the paper.
Yeah, back up a little bit. That looks good. All right, look at Shelby. And then look at me. One, two, three, cheese.
All right, chief.
Yeah, 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 council stay.
Council stay right there.
One, two, three.
My turn.
Good deal.
Mayor, while we're in transition, I want to say something.
Yes, sir.
I, I was listening to Dr. Church just a minute ago, talking about, did you know, did you know, did you know, on a much larger scale, everybody you see sitting up here has those same feelings. Because when we ran for council, we ran to represent our citizens of Lenore, and with the people that I see out here, and your staff, a lot of our worries are gone. So we're, we're very fortunate, and thank you, each and every one of you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. Great, it's always great to celebrate great things like that. May, April may seem to be a great proclamation month for a lot of things that are going on. So I thank you all for what you do, and protecting us. Fire, we got firemen the last time, but thank you guys as well for what you do. So it's great that, we have great departments and great leaders, and we're proud of that very much. All right, we'll move on then to, we don't have any matters scheduled for public hearings this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items, consisting of the first, item A are minutes, City Council Meeting of April 16, 2024. Item B are the minutes, closed session minutes of the City Council Meeting of April 16. These were reviewed by the City Attorney, the City Council, and the City Manager. Item C are minutes from the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, April 23, 2024. Item D is a contiguous annexation petition, certificate of sufficiency. This is a recommendation to accept the certificate of sufficiency and defer the public hearing until Tuesday, May 21, for a contiguous annexation petition for property located at the intersection of Hope Dale Drive and Providence Lane. That is North Carolina PIN number 2757372928, as submitted. Item E is a resolution of support and commitment. This is a recommendation that council, a resolution to apply for an active transportation, infrastructure, investment program, planning grant, and to authorize the city managers to sign the contract on behalf of the city for a federal highway administration planning grant to study the feasibility of creating a trail along the Caldwell Railroad from Lenore to Hickory. The Western Piedmont Council Government is submitting the application on behalf of the City of Lenore and six other jurisdictions, including Hudson, Sawmills, Granite Falls, Rhode His, Hickory, and Caldwell County. Note, the proposed application amount is $100,000, and the total local match is $25,000. As one of seven local governments matching for the project, the City of Lenore will contribute $3,575. The estimated study area length is approximately 25 miles. Additional background information is included on the council action form in the agenda packet. Item F is the Capitol Project Budget Ordinance Comprehensive Plan. This is a recommendation that council adopt the Capitol Project Budget Ordinance in the amount of $125,000, to include the expenditure of funds for the development of a comprehensive plan as recommended. Item G are, is budget amendments for FY 23, 24. Staff rec, request approval of the amendments to the bud, annual budget ordinance for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, as follows. for fiscal year beginning June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four as follows. Item one, approve the utilization of additional general fund revenues for needed expenditures. Item two, approve the allocation of general fund expenditures for such allocations as professional services for the Lenore Fire Department, C coal, and needed repairs for various equipment and buildings during the fiscal year. Item three, approve the utilization of additional enterprise funds revenues for needed expenditures. Item four, approve the allo, allocation of enterprise fund expenditures. Item five, approve the allocation of funding for the comprehensive plan, capital project. Item six, approve the funding for Main Street expenditures. Item seven, approve the allocation of fund balance for the LTDA for project funding such as the LHS and the Pavilion. Item H is a proclamation. This is from the North Carolina League of Municipalities one hundredth anniversary. And we would be approving a proclamation to commemorate the National League of Cities one hundredth anniversary and celebrate the incredible contribution of America's local governments by officially designated May as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month as submitted. I didn't read that proclamation, thank goodness. Item F, I mean, item I is a proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Week. Item J is the proclamation for National Public Works Week. Item K is the proclamation for Celebrate Drinking Water Week. There are your items on the consent agenda, A through K. I'll open it up to council for any discussion or, uh, motion when you're ready for it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd, uh, make a motion that we approve item, uh, A through G, or A through K on the consent agenda.
Have a motion from council member Presswood that we approve the consent agenda items A through K as presented. No other question or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Six, zero, by the way, missing one council member. All right, we'll move on then to, uh, requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council at this time, this is, would be the time to do so. I'll open that to anyone in the audience. Glad to have everyone here. All right, seeing no one rushing the podium at this time. Glad to have you guys here, by the way. Thank you for that. And, uh, so we'll move on to, uh, we do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening. So we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the City Manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Uh, Mayor, Counsel, tonight, a couple items for information. The, uh, ABC Board will meet on Thursday, May ninth, at two o'clock. The Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, May ninth, at six P M. And that'll be third floor City Hall. The City County Service Committee will meet on Monday, May thirteenth, at, I think, eleven forty-five. And that'll be held at the Civic Center. The Economic Development Advisory Committee will meet on Tuesday, May fourteenth, eight fifteen A M. And that'll be at the Civic Center. And the Planning Board will meet on Monday, May twentieth, at five thirty in these chambers. Uh, one other meeting to note is, um, tomorrow night, uh, Charlotte will be having the inter-basin transfer meeting, discuss their thirty-three million gallon a day request to make an inter-basin transfer. That's going to be held in Hickory at the Ridgeview, uh, Community Library at five thirty. I know the mayor and I are going and also, uh, Public Utilities Director, Dr. Church. And we have, I think, Radford Thomas will be attending as well. If anybody else wants to go, they're, they're welcome. I think it's going to be a tight quarters from what I understand, so have to get there early. But, uh, any questions? I know the Cog has sent out some information on that, so if you have questions, let me know and I'll get you the information. Uh, tonight, we have several items for council action. The first is a water agreement with Caldwell County. As you know, we've been selling water to the county for many, many years. Uh, you have in your packet, and we discussed this the other day at the Committee of the Whole. A ten-year agreement, uh, that's the only changes we have in the agreement from last five-year term was a ten-year agreement. Um, and changing the names. Otherwise, uh, it's the same agreements we've had in previous years. Dr. Church is here, could speak on it. And also, I welcome County Manager Donald Duncan's here as well. Uh, worked on this for several weeks, but I think we're all come to agreement and we're ready for consideration. And I think the county may consider that next week at their meeting. So if you have questions, I'm, I welcome Dr. Church or Mr. Duncan, or myself.
Okay. You heard the, uh, recommendation for the agreement with the water purchase. This is, uh, water sales agreement between the city of Lenore and Caldwell County to provide up to one million five hundred thousand gallons of drinking water per day at the applicable wholesale water rate. Note, this agreement shall become effective on the first day of July, twenty twenty-four, and shall expire on the thirtieth day of June, twenty thirty-four, unless earlier terminated in accordance with the terms herein. So open for any discussion and/or motion from the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve, uh, this water agreement between the city and the county as presented.
A mo, motion from Council Member Thomas that we approve the, uh, water purchase agreement between the city of Lenore and Caldwell County as presented. No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously, six of them.
The next agreement is a nine-one-one consolidation agreement. Um, staff recommends City Council approve the proposed agreement between the city and the county for consolidation nine-one-one service and the creation of a joint agency pursuant to NCGS one sixty-eight, four sixty-two to provide emergency public safety communication services when Caldwell County and city of Lenore. Uh, Chief Brent Phelps is here and also, again, the county manager's here to go back and go into more details. This is something the state has been, uh, I guess, encouraging for a number of years. And a lot of counties around us have already consolidated. And, uh, as you're aware, we have a PSAP here that, uh, I guess it's not an official backup PSAP anymore based on state's standards. Um, but the trend is consolidate and I'll let Chief Phelps come up. And Mr. Duncan, if you want to come up and share from the county, they can give you more details because they've been working on it a lot longer than I have.
Just to summarize, we talked about this at Committee of the Whole last week, the other week. Um, for a number of years, we were considered the backup for the primary PSAP in the county that is operated by Caldwell County. In twenty twenty, we were made aware from the State nine-one, State nine-one-one Board that we did not meet the criteria and we could no longer be considered the county's backup. We had five, six Zoom meetings at that time to work through some of that process. The very first, uh, meeting was, we were going to have to quit running operations immediately. Thankfully, through some phone calls and, and meetings, that changed. But at that point, we were deemed what they consider a standalone center. Where that impacts the city is standalone centers do not reap any funding from the State nine-one-one Board, uh, for, uh, PSAPs, primary call-taking centers. And so the state is encouraging, urging, forcing, some might say. It's all in your terminology. They, yeah. Essentially, we don't have to do it, but if we decide not to do it, every expense will be on the city of Lenore's dime and no funding through the state. The state does want consolidated centers in every county in the state. And there, there are, uh, when set up correctly, I, I feel like, uh, it's the right time for us now to look at that. I think financially, long-term, years down the road, um, for that funding that the state gives, uh, that is a smart decision for us to look at. There, there is a transfer delay when a nine-one-one call comes in and it is for police services in the city of Lenore. It rings to the county center first and then they transfer it to us and then we handle it. So it's a short delay, but there is a delay. And so one of the pushes from the state level is consolidated centers. That takes that delay away. So the agreement is in your packet. Our city attorneys went through it, the county attorneys went through it. Um, there is a, a governing board, uh, set up, it's listed out in there, who has pieces of that and, and say, one of my concerns and, and I think the sheriff and everybody involves concerns is, if there's an issue, how do we address that? If, you know, if, if somebody calls in and, and we don't like how something was dispatched or handled, you know, what's the process for appropriately dealing with that for the service that we provide? And so we, we're working through that. Um, there is a step down. I think it is as fair as can be done financially. And that step down, uh, it's consistent, it's fair, it's a five-year plan that's in the agreement as well. It lays out what the city's responsibility would be, first year, second year, uh, and then eventually phasing out. I feel like that, that doesn't put too much financial burden all at one time on the county and allows us to phase out and then eventually they, they completely take that over. Uh, I do feel like that is a, a, a fair way to do that between the city of Lenore and Caldwell County in transitioning. Um, what am I leaving out?
Effective date, July one, twenty twenty-five.
Yes. It, it would go into effect July one, twenty twenty-five. The, the county and the county manager can speak on this, is in the process of building a new communication center. Uh, I think the merger would happen before that center is completed, uh, as far as on paper and some of the services. But, uh, eventually, everything would be housed at the county's communication center. Uh, I've seen some of the, uh, diagrams and the architect. It, it will be a state-of-the-art center. Uh, I know they have some big plans. I'll let the county manager speak on some of those for the overall center, but.
Thank you. Any questions of Chief Phelps before he steps away? All right, we welcome Donald Duncan, our Caldwell County Manager. Welcome, sir.
Say special thanks you, uh, to Chief Phelps and all the cooperation from the city of Lenore. Thank you all for the water agreement. Uh, we're most appreciative and look forward to that continued partnership. This is another more elaborate partnership that we're getting ready into. Uh, city of Lenore is one major component of that, but also in this new facility. And special thanks to our representative, Dustin Hall. Both Senators Proctor and Heiss have sought graciously to benefit Caldwell County with extreme amount of funding to build not just a PSAP for our county, but a dis, um, a dispatch center for all of western North Carolina. We will be the heart of emergency management in the western part of the state. One of the first things that will happen is a consolidation with what's called the twenty-four hour watch. And so if you go to Raleigh today, there is people sitting there twenty-four hours a day monitoring the entire state. So if there's a major disaster that extends beyond the reach of a city or a county, uh, so something say such as the Key Bridge collapse, there's a group of people that that's entire job to start talking about these larger faci, larger incidents that we may be encountered with. So right now, they're all in one location. They'll be distributed to three locations. One will be in Caldwell County, the other one in Kinston, and one in Raleigh, of course. The next thing is, is we'll have offices from the Office of State Fire Marshal, Department of Insurance, as well as, uh, members of the National Guard and the Cyber Security Response Team. They're all consolidated down Raleigh. We're trying to redistribute those assets across the state because if one facility gets hit, attacked, hurricane susceptible, you have all your eggs in one basket. And so the legislature is saying this is not the way to do this. It's not smart for emergency management policy. So they want to distribute that and will be the home for western North Carolina emergency management. So we're looking forward to that. Also, uh, NC Viper does not have an office in the state. They kind of travel around to different highway patrol units and they, they borrow conference rooms and borrow garages. They'll also be here with us now. This will be the first office for NC Viper. We're looking forward to that. So, uh, big partnership. You guys will be in on the ground floor of that and we're looking forward to it. So far, the state has offered us about twenty-four million dollars. Part of this MOA tonight is to apply for the next round of digital funding, which will be the consos, the consoles and all of the server network to build this facility. So it'll be its own, what I would call miniature server farm in the basement of this building. The idea is that it's a standoff facility that is designed to take a direct hit from a category five hurricane. So, uh, be an interesting facility when it's all done. Uh, we're in the middle of design now. We hope to be able to start construction before the end of the year. So the delay in the con, in the MOA may be pushed back a little bit depending on construction schedule and availability of equipment because a lot of this equipment is custom-made. It's not on the shelf and we can just pick up the phone and order it. Uh, and it's a little more expensive construction because it is essentially a bunker inside of a building. And that's why you have to design them these days to be able to take, you know, hits from natural disasters. So we look forward to the partnership and thank you for your trust in us.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Duncan, Counsel? Thank you. Okay, you heard the recommendation, uh, for the nine-one-one consolidation agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, consolidation agreement with, nine-one-one consolidation agreement with the county.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, uh, Mayor Protim Stevens makes a motion to, uh, for the approval of the nine-one-one consolidation agreement between city of Lenore and Caldwell County as presented. No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, and Mr. Duncan for your report on that. All right, Mr. Hildebrand?
The next item you have is an order of abatement for five oh one Stage Street. Uh, staff recommends approval of the order of abatement directing staff to abate the minimum housing violations by demolishing the structure on the property at five oh one Stage Street. That's parcel ID zero-six dash one-eight dash one dash fifty-one and also NC PIN two-seven-four-nine-four-eight-five-one-four-seven. Uh, we've had a number of calls of service there over the years and that's step one. There's another structure there for step two.
All right, you heard the, uh, recommendation for the City Manager for order of abatement for five oh one A Stage Street as presented, recommendation from our staff. Any discussion, Counsel, or question?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the order of abatement for five oh one A Stage Street.
A motion from Council Member Beal that we approve the order of abatement for five oh one A Stage Street as presented. No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously.
And the next item is the part B of that is five-ten stra, uh, Stage Street. Uh, this is an order of abatement directing staff to abate minimum housing violations by demolishing the structure and property at five-ten Stage Street. That's parcel ID zero-six dash eighteen dash one dash fifty and NC PIN two-seven-four-nine-four-eight-six-one-two-four. Uh, this is a property adjacent to the property we just, uh, went back and did the order of abatement.
All right.
And I will mention Hannah Williams is here as well if you have questions.
Okay. You heard the recommendation from the City Manager and our staff recommendation, uh, for order of abatement for five-ten Stage Street Northwest as presented. Any discussion from anyone on the council or question? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the order of abatement for five-one-zero Stage Street.
A motion of Council Member Beal to approve the order of abatement for five-ten Stage Street Northwest as presented. No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
That's all I have. Mr. Squish.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to, uh, reports and recommendations of our City Attorney, Mr. Ward.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing tonight, huh? How about that? You've been busy, though, this weekend.
Yes. I have been. I apologize to Ms. Cannon for getting the, uh, corrections to the closed session minutes to her at five-thirty. She's being generous, but.
She said five-thirty-five.
Oh, five-thirty-five, yeah. Yes. That's right.
Well, good. Well, thank you for getting them done. How about that? And you for getting them, Mr. Wood. All right, thank you for that. We'll move on then for report and recommendation from Mayor's office. I would like to, uh, this is our, uh, annual, uh, board appointment and reappointment announcement. As you know, we have changed to all our, our boards that we appoint and reappoint, uh, by July one of each year, all those. Uh, tonight, we have several boards, uh, of people there that we will be, uh, you know, presenting to you on May twenty-first. Tonight, we'll just let you know, uh, who these boards are and who the people are. We'll be contacting all these people about reappointments to these boards and those that won't be, we'll let you know, uh, as we'll be looking for, uh, uh, you know, any vacancies that we will have. But, uh, this will consist of the ABC Board. I'm not going to read all the names to you. I'll just do the boards, uh, on that. You have them in front of you on that. The Foothills Reg, uh, Airport Authority Board, those are two-year terms. Uh, we have one appointment there that would be a re-up. Uh, Lenore Housing Authority, five-year term. We have one reappointment and we have a vacancy which will come in two thousand twenty-six on that. Business Advisory Board are three-year terms and we have, uh, four that will be reconsidered. Actually, three that will be reconsidered for reappointment to that, uh, board. We have the Planning Board and the Historic Preservation Commission, that's three-year term. We will have three that are, uh, up for reappointment there. The Board of Adjustments are also three-year terms. Now, the Board of Adjustments is made up of Planning Now, the Board of Adjustments is made up of planning board members who also serve on the Board of Adjustments. They are appointed to that separately, but we have three that will be, uh, up for reappointment there on that. Uh, Recreation Advisory Board, two-year term, we have two, uh, that will be up for reappointment there, and then a vacancy on that board, uh, to be looked into. Lenore Tourism Development Authority are four-year terms, and that, of course, is a special appointing to that term, uh, by the General Assembly dictates to us who serves on, uh, on those particular seats for that, the Tourism Development Authority Board. We have one that would, we will ask to, uh, be, uh, hopefully reappointed to that board, and then we have a vacancy on that that we'll be looking into as part of our lodging of the community. So, that's, uh, that, I present that to you, and we'll be making those recommendations to you, uh, at our May twenty-first meeting. If they have any questions of anything concerning these announcements for board, uh, reappointments and appointments. Okay, thank you. If not, then we'll move on to, uh, report and recommendations of any of our council members. Anyone have anything that they would like to, uh, bring to us tonight? I know something's gotta be happening there somewhere.
Not right, not this week, not next week.
All right.
And a happy birthday to you, too.
Do y'all have birthdays coming up?
Yes.
When is it?
May twenty-first.
May twenty-first.
And he's May eighteenth.
May eighteenth. Happy birthday early.
Early.
Yep.
We're gonna celebrate all month, right?
Yeah, celebrate, yeah, we're gonna celebrate forever. Okay, anything else to come before us tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.